So in terms of the opportunity before us, really this is a partnership with ASU as well as the Mayo brand because of the strategic alignment that ASU has already in place with Mayo. So the Mayo Health Systems, the Mayo Clinic is in partnership right now with ASU to execute on a number of things, one of which we'll be talking about as part of this program. So in terms of this program, what we have access to is the expertise, the facilities, the brands, the programs, the faculty and the students, certainly of ASU but also of the Mayo. In terms of the angel and venture capital markets for company development, again, very important. Without that type of a funding stream, these companies just don't mature to the point of being able to commercialize. The entrepreneurial networks, all of the training, the mentorships, all of the opportunities to pitch companies in front of investors, the assistance in company formation and the assistance in finding boards and high-level executives, all of that which is part of growing a company to startup, that all comes as well with the Mayo ASU package. And certainly the regional technology and innovation markets. So because of all of the markets that they're in nationally and internationally, you know, we have a broader audience in which to showcase the companies that are being developed through the network. So that's really the value proposition, is all of that intellectual knowledge, capacity, ability to execute, networks and relationships that are just really quite robust. Another thing that's exciting, at least to me on this opportunity, is we're trying to create this execution in Peoria as the West Valley hub for innovation. Going back to our first economic development implementation strategy, which BioInspire was born out of, we had the objective and the goal to really start to create Peoria as a West Valley hub for innovation, for technology, so that we could capture the attention of the creative class, of those that want to grow businesses that are entrepreneurial in spirit and ability. And this certainly elevates us quite a bit from where we started, now that we're into BioInspire 2.0. So under this model, we certainly have the integrated nature of BioInspire to ASU and the Mayo Clinic is the only West Valley location for technology innovation commercialization programs. And there's three real components to this. One is the Mayo ASU MedTech Accelerator. So that's a program that we have access to, and that's currently housed at Sky Song with a satellite location in Peoria and Mayo Clinic in Scottsdale. Then the ASU Startup Accelerator, which the abbreviation is ASA, at BioInspire. So that's their management and operation of our facility for starting up companies in the technology spaces that we want to expand into. So that's ASU having a physical presence in the city of Peoria. And then the third leg of the stool are all the technology transfer and commercialization services that come out of the Arizona ASU Technology Enterprise Office. So we really have a nice package of support services, of funding opportunities to plug into the Mayo ASU strategic alignment and actually have ASU operating our program here for startups of entrepreneurial pursuits. So when you look at the types of technologies, I mentioned we want to expand, throw our net wider to capture a larger audience of technologies. We're looking at everything from software development and healthcare IT, to data management analytics, artificial intelligence, certainly medical devices as well. It could include cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is a growing industry. You know, there's a whole host of potential technologies that we're going to open the door to, so that we can have greater volume as well as greater potential startups coming out the other end as well. We feel that diversifying is smart. That'll help us weather any cycles, economic cycles or investment cycles. And it gets a more enriched pot of entrepreneurial activity coming into the city. Also, when you look at the type of entrepreneurs that we want to expand, we could have and probably do have a great number of skilled veterans, those that maybe have worked on very sophisticated fighter jets for 15, 20 years. So avionics, aircraft repair, software, all of that experience can translate into new entrepreneurial ideas. So we want to reach out to that population, minority business owners, as well as West Valley community-based entrepreneurs and startups. And I think that's really important because if they're in the West Valley already and they're going to facility in the West Valley to help them grow, they're more likely to stay in the West Valley. And I think that's important. Certainly ASU faculty bring a lot to the table in terms of potential entrepreneurs as well as ASU students. So when you look at the type of entrepreneurs that we're looking, again, to cast the net wider for, it includes these as well as others. So it's really like being plugged into an already successful entrepreneurial system that's number one in the state already. So it's kind of a plug-and-play model. We have the facility, we have the bandwidth, they come in, manage and operate, and automatically we have access to all of what they bring to the table through all three of those programs. Again, the Mayo MedTech Accelerator, all the commercialization services, and of course, our new and improved BioInspire program. Again, I think it's worth repeating, no steady seed funds, that's a big cost savings. No TAP funding is a big cost savings, and we're looking to the private market to fill that niche. Now, in terms of public benefit, I think it's important to recognize that what we're talking about here in terms of execution is starting with an entrepreneur and somebody that has an entrepreneurial idea with the output being a startup company. Okay, within that range, there's not significant direct job creation because you're literally trying to perfect the technology, you're trying to get the approvals that are needed, could be, you know, federal approvals that are needed, state approvals that are needed. So you're not going to see job creation in that phase. Typically, where you see job creation opportunities and what's called the scale-up phase. So if we're an entrepreneur to startup, right, so the output from the very beginning is a startup company, the second phase is from startup company all the way through scale-up, right? So now I'm selling my product, I'm getting orders, I'm growing my company, now I need to hire people, now I might need more space. That occurs really in the scale-up phase. So I think it's important to note that during the startup phase, there really isn't direct job creation of any size. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that under public benefit, it's really not a job creation program.
Yeah, Scott, let me just stop you for a minute there. And just to underscore what Scott just mentioned, that is a different conceptual model than what we had in the past agreement that we're transitioning from. And that was, as you all know, focused on specific job creation. This is a somewhat different model, and we think has some real exciting potential. But I think it's, I just wanted to pause his flow right there to make sure that you all had an opportunity to reflect on that difference because it is a pretty substantial one.
Along those same lines, in the past, we talked about creating an industry within our city that might not have existed had we not intervened. And so even though we might not be talking about job creation immediately, are we still talking about these entrepreneurs creating a business that stays in Peoria?
That's our objective, yes. The thing that's important to note, though, is that, you know, we can't control if they do or don't stay. The thinking is that if we find good West Valley entrepreneurs, or even from outside the West Valley, and give them the services, the facilities, the ecosystem of support that they need to be successful, that they'll stay. But I just want to make sure that I'm clear that there's no guarantee that they'll stay. But yes, in terms of creating an industry and intervention, all those things that we wanted to accomplish would still be the objective here. But it's not something that I can guarantee.
And part of that ecosystem, just to flesh that out a little bit, is what we're also looking at for the Innovation Center at the P-83, the sports complex project that's under negotiation right now as well. So that creates opportunities for firms to locate in an innovation center that we would also be under contract with a very successful developer for the creation of that, as you all know. So that's part of that ecosystem as Scott describes it.
Absolutely, because what we want to do is make sure that we have the space to accommodate them as they scale up, as they grow, and keep them in an environment of innovation and creativity. Now, another thing, because typically, public benefit is judged by, you know, job creation or capital expenditure. And so to the second point, you know, again, during the startup phase, you're literally starting a company. So you're not spending a lot of money, you're trying to attract revenue. So this isn't something that we would expect to see as a metric, you know, large capital expense, just because, you know, again, you're just starting to start the company. And there's not going to be a large commercial space absorption out of this. So then, if those are not the public benefit, then what is the public benefit? And really, what we're doing at the root of it is entrepreneurial ecosystem development. So what does that mean? Well, at the end of the day, when you look at successful executions throughout the country, there's a whole support system that is provided for entrepreneurialism, for small businesses, and for innovation creativity. And we all know that through those examples and those executions that have been done well, they have been enormously impactful economically. But you have to create the mentorship, the services, the funding, the ability to help with required federal studies and approvals, get in front of senior executives that are willing to serve on boards, all of the things that it takes, secure intellectual property, all of the things that it takes to take an idea through commercialization to scale up to success. And if you can create that environment, and that's really what it is, is creating the environment for innovation success, it attracts innovation and creativity. So that's what we're looking to do is entrepreneurial ecosystem development. Part of that also was the recent approval of the Small Business Development Center contract, right? So that is another piece of the entrepreneurial ecosystem. So growing Peoria's entrepreneurial base, and from that base, attracting other entrepreneurial activity. That is something that we're seeking to accomplish. Launching new technology startup companies. You know, when you look, you know, when technology companies are evaluating a market, not that it's the first thing they think about, but looking at, well, how many technology companies are starting up in an area? How much of an ecosystem do you have to support technology and innovation? You know, it's something that they look at. So launching new technology startup companies helps with our overall portfolio of offerings for attracting mid-sized technology companies. Creating innovative technologies and creating the environment of innovation and entrepreneurial activity. And the key word there is environment. That's what part of an ecosystem development involves. And getting to the point where then we can actually start growing then our small businesses, creating small businesses, growing them with the help of the SBDC, scaling up businesses, okay? Now, during that scale-up phase, you know, now I need to hire people because I'm selling product, I'm securing sales contracts, I need bigger space. That's when you get to job creation, that's when you get to capital expenditures, and that's when you start to see space absorption. So those are the things that we're trying to lead towards. So what this graphic tries to show is what the ASU Startup Accelerator at Peoria, and that's not going to be the name, but we'll figure that part out a little later. But just looking at year one, what would that look like? So this is an ecosystem development, startup test and build. So that's what I'm talking about during that phase one, right, where you get a concept, right, and you want to test it. Does it have market acceptance? You know, there's a whole vetting process that ASU goes through. And then to build. So what are some of the ingredients that go into it? And those are some of the items mentioned there. Everything from recruitment of entrepreneurs and mentors and investors in the West Valley begins. You know, marketing campaign developed for promoting Peoria ASU collaboration to Peoria and West Valley entrepreneurs. Angel investor events, those are events that we could possibly have here in Peoria, where we're actually holding pitch sessions to angel investors. That would be a significant event for us to have in the world of innovation. ASU commercialization services available, Mayo Clinic test bed services available. So those are all examples of things that can happen to help grow our brand as a city of innovation and technology. So then what would be some of those key inputs? Well, it's the entrepreneurs, the ASU expertise, the Mayo Clinic linkages, the mentors and advisors that really help walk these companies through the process. Because a lot of times, the profile, and we saw this a lot in BioInspire, is you have this fantastic scientific mind, or this fantastic engineering mind, and they just don't understand the business side of it. So you really have to walk them through that and help them understand, well, that's great technology, but how are you going to sell it? Who are you going to sell it to? Is there a market for it? What's your business plan? How are you going to execute that? You know, all that kind of advice is the difference between commercializing and having a great idea that didn't go anywhere. Attraction of entrepreneurs throughout the broader West Valley, all those things. So if you look at the timeline portion on the bottom of the slide, it'll kind of tell you what that startup development process is, starting with what's the problem in the marketplace that I'm seeking a solution for. You know, product-market fit, you know, does IP stands for intellectual property protection. Do I have intellectual property protection? What's my go-to-market strategy? And then the revenue business model, all the way to the building phase. So that's in year one, what we can expect to happen in terms of inputs and outputs. So then if we looked at years two and three, what might that look like? And so again, so now we're talking about if we had a successful year one, now we're talking about the opportunity for scale-up. And so we're looking at, you know, capital connections facilitated by ASU Venture Development Group, including angels and VCs. So that's really important, you know. So our companies having the ability to go into those ASU angel and venture capital networks and making pitches for funding, that's something that really speaks to our brand as a city to enable our companies to have access to. Not every city has access to that, the way that we're going to have access to that. Entrepreneurial boot camps, again, the creative class, and getting the targeted groups in front of boot camp classes. You know, and so this is where you see the first of capitalization and jobs created, as I mentioned. Investor demo days in Peoria. Again, those are great marketing messages, those are great image builders for Peoria to be able to say, we are now evolved in our innovation economy. So if you look at the timeline portion of the slide towards the bottom, then that's where you get your, you know, first quarter product development, second quarter product manufacturing. Well, now you need an actual space. You know, I need to manufacture something, I need a space. So our space availability for 2,500 square feet, 5,000 square feet, 7,000, 10,000 square feet is something that we are going to have to come back and talk to the council about. Do we have that space? Because we've got to have it to keep it. But then, you know, you see the progression of the company's growth throughout in the ideal world. Not every company is going to commercialize, there's going to be attrition. But again, that comes to what's the quality of the support system, the quality of the advice, the mentoring, everything that ASU has. And before I go, does that make sense? Any questions on that, kind of what's year one, what's year two, why the difference?
Counsel, do you have any questions? No? Go ahead, go on.
Well, that's the perfect segue, then. So what I've done so far is kind of summarized the proposal. The proposal has a lot more to it. Those are kind of the salient points. But Charlie's here to answer any questions you might have. I'm happy to go back to any slide if there's any questions of, well, why do we want to do this anymore? What's the ultimate value of innovation? How does this tie to the Economic Development Implementation Strategy? How does this tie to our Innovation Center project at P-83? Happy to talk about any of that.
Councilmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Charles. And Charles, thank you for being here this evening. I understand in the presentation how ASU can certainly help BioInspire with their programs and help them move forward. My question is, what does ASU expect to gain from this partnership? And will it somehow help your brand?
Well, first off, thanks, Scott, for having me here, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate the invitation. So for those of you who may not be aware of it, ASU is the largest university in the country. We have between our actual students in our four campuses plus our online programs, we have nearly 120,000 students. So when you look at the brand equity that the university continues to evolve, not only here in Arizona, in the country, but even internationally, it's always in our best interest to look at collaborations that will help to plant and grow deeper roots in the markets where we are. And one of the lessons specifically around entrepreneurial training, so if you look at President Crowe's vision of the New American at President Crowe's vision of the New American University, which is, it's radically different from the historical, traditional ways that universities were run. So there's kind of eight pillars of that, of his design, and one of those is fostering entrepreneurship. So that means everything from faculty and students, obviously, then also, as a public university, within the regional markets, the regional communities where our campuses are. So with four campuses, our main one being in Tempe, the East Valley, Mesa, downtown Phoenix, and then here in Glendale, any opportunity that we have in order to collaborate, whether it's public-private partnerships, or through industry, which we're already doing some of this in Peoria with some of your companies here, through Scott, that always enhances our brand, because it just helps to further demonstrate, and as we are in front of the legislature annually, even though our contribution from the state legislature as a component of our overall funding keeps going down, we still are before the legislature each year with our budget requests. And anytime we can show these sorts of collaborations, how we're helping to further leverage programs and initiatives that exist within the university, that's good, that's very good for us.
Anyone else?
Thank you for coming all the way over here today. Typically, traditionally, U of A has had kind of a corner on the medical technology, medical, if you want to be a doctor or something, you went to U of A. Can you tell me how the biomedical field, how ASU is, because I know you are getting stronger and stronger in that, how do they compete now with, and I know you're prejudiced, and I kind of am too, because I live up here, but tell me how they compete? If a kid is thinking of going, they want to study biomedical technology, whatever, how do they choose? Why is ASU as attractive as U of A or somewhere else?
Well, I think this sort of speaks to the creativity of President Crowe, understanding that absent having a medical school itself, that collaborations were going to be the key to be, for us to be able to offer that type of education to wannabe students. In addition to the building of the Biodesign Institute, which was 10, I think, 13, 13 years ago, housed within the Biodesign Institute is approximately 20 different unique centers of excellence that are run by center directors across a myriad of different...
Is that in downtown?
No, that's in Tempe, the Biodesign Institute. So you have a combination both of research that's happening, cutting-edge research that's facilitated by, you know, state-of-the-art lab equipment for, that are developing life-changing technologies from therapeutics to med device. But then on the student's side, through our collaboration with Mayo Clinic, we now have just launched this year our first degree program. So even though we don't have the physical medical school that U of A has had, and it's a great program, there's no doubt about it, and it's tied to a hospital in Tucson, through the Mayo affiliation, we now have space up in Scottsdale for the training of med students, and we'll be able to confer degrees now for students. So I don't think we look at it competitively with U of A, because we're both public universities, we're both under the border regions. So to the extent that we can both achieve success, it's for the betterment of our state.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I would just really like to thank you. I appreciate ASU's desire to do the greater good, to look regionally, to look in new places and help develop an economy that's beneficial for all of Arizona. So I really thoroughly appreciate what you're doing. And I also appreciate you taking a solid look at BioInspire and saying, there's value that was created here that we want to be able to extend. So I think that that's a big credit to the city of Peoria, to you, Scott, and bringing us to this point right now, which is clearly the next step for us. So I'm very, very proud to be able to take the next step. But I do have just a couple of questions. So moving out of just medical device into an expanded technology, how, you know, before we were very careful about taking people through the FDA requirements, the, all of the regulations and regimens that needed to be there, there was a lot of help that they needed. So how are we going to manage that now with this diverse technology?
Sure, yeah, I'll, well, thank you for your comment a moment ago. I've mentioned to Scott from the beginning, just having been aware of the BioInspire program, that I commend you, Mayor and council, for having the foresight to enter into that type of relationship and to put your money where your mouth is, because we deal with a lot of municipalities throughout the state. And you, the city of Peoria has certainly been the one that has stepped up and put the effort into that. So that was very attractive to us, and the proposition of being able to come in and leverage what you've already launched with the BioInspire program, but not only to leverage that, but to expand that both horizontally and vertically into different kinds of markets. So meaning that we're replicating, we will, would be replicating here in Peoria, a lot of the different programs and accelerators that we already run. But the accelerators would be customized to the composition of what exists here in Peoria, and the types of businesses that you're trying to attract. So horizontally, for example, being able to set up accelerators, we have cohorts of entrepreneurs that would have the common denominator of veterans, for example, so we run a veterans accelerator, veterans cycling out of the military, who are often very well-equipped to be entrepreneurs because of their discipline and training within the service, women in entrepreneurship, so that's another one. So independent of what type of business they're doing, we have these types of accelerators. But then vertically, also as Scott had mentioned in the presentation, specifically targeted towards areas where you, for whatever reason, seem to have a concentration of those types of businesses, whether it's in aviation, avionics, IT, entertainment, which is one we're talking about right now with Boochie Entertainment. So what we then do, once we've identified collectively with you, identified the most appropriate accelerators, is to then source the necessary talent that we need to, through a combination, through, again, programs that we already run, mentors and advisors that come in and they're able to provide that to these companies, whether it be med tech companies on the regulatory side, or it's IT experts, we assemble that. And as I mentioned earlier, our lesson that we've learned is that, in order to do that effectively, whether it's these business advisors, or it's investors, angel investors, or the entrepreneurs themselves, we have to bring all of that to the market, rather than expecting them to come out to the main campus. So what's really exciting about this potential collaboration with Peoria is that this is tethered to our Glendale campus, so 10 minutes away here. So we have the ability to not only bring in expertise and research over there to try to establish businesses and locate them, base them here in Peoria, and grow them in Peoria, but then to tap into the various talent that I mentioned earlier. So across the vast networks we have, we can, we can source the necessary talent we need, whatever verticals that end up making the most sense for Peoria, including med tech. So we don't want to, we don't want to do anything to dampen what you guys have already achieved with BioInspire, but rather to parlay that into bigger things. And I think the opportunity exists to do that through our collaboration, our partnership with Mayo Clinic.
That partnership with Mayo Clinic is very exciting, and so you've already had that established with your other, you say you have two other facilities, is that correct?
Let's see, two facilities, which, see, I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't, what did I refer to?
Two other incubator facilities was...
Yeah, well, with Mayo Clinic?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're just now launching the med tech, this is a new thing, but our partnership with Mayo is more than a decade old. So we have two campuses, so we have the hospital, which is off the 101 in Phoenix, and then we have the clinic over on Shea in Scottsdale, 140-something in Shea. So what we're going to be doing is using resources in Scottsdale, where we're going to do entrepreneurial training for entrepreneurs that get attached to new technologies coming out of Mayo Clinic or from ASU, and then being able to use Mayo Clinic as a test bed, where we have clinical input from doctors, physicians there who can look at technologies even before a lot of time and money has been spent in that. So that's part of the validation, the model that Scott talked about, of how we really advance technologies. You want to advance the most promising ones, not waste time and money on ones that aren't. So yes, we have two campuses that we're working with of Mayo currently.
Okay, so I get the Mayo campuses, but as far as accelerator campuses, there's our campus, and you have others?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, so yes, so we have our main one, which is in Scottsdale, it's Sky Song.
Sky Song.
So that's Plaza Company, which I think is involved right now in your discussions for P-83. We are also doing the same type of thing that we're talking about here today with, in Phoenix, with the city of Phoenix and our downtown campus. So that's supposed to launch later this month. We start our first training of community entrepreneurs and faculty and students from our downtown campus end of this month. So this would be the one tied to our Glendale campus. We obviously have our one in Scottsdale for our Tempe campus, and then the last one that we have not launched yet is in Mesa for our Mesa Polytechnic campus.
Uh-huh, okay. Wow, and that's all going to fall under you, all your responsibilities?
I think that might be something that is under discussion right now, but as of now, yes, that's kind of the, that's kind of the plan. We're going to need more folks, but we have a...
You need more people.
Yeah, we have, we have a strong team of, and I think this is important for the council to know, is that we look at everything that we do from an entrepreneurial development standpoint, that it is a stool, and there's three legs of the stool, and you really cannot effectively execute on the development of an ecosystem if you don't have all three of these legs of the stool. So the first one being, we just call it the human capital, so that's the entrepreneurs, the researchers, the inventors, people that are coming up with the ideas of products or services, whatever, coupled with the advisors, the mentors, the serial entrepreneurs, people who can come in and help mitigate the risk and give the guidance to these entrepreneurs. So that's the human capital piece. The second leg of the stool being physical capital. And the physical capital is the physical structures, so whether it's the BioInspire building or what you're doing, P-83, there needs to be a place to house, to incubate these startups, where they can co-locate, they can lament, they can celebrate together, because there's a certain energy that happens. And typically, most of these startups don't have the money to go out and lease space on their own. So the ability to have a place to go and advance their concept and idea and meet with advisors and mentors is critical, as we found. So we have a place that we call 1951 at Sky Song, which is the year that Scottsdale was launched. So it's about 9,000 square feet, but it's exactly what I just described, which would be similar to what we do here, BioInspire, and then whatever other space we have. Then the third leg being the actual investment capital. So the investment capital being everything that, from grants, competitions, non-dilutive capital, to angel investors, to venture capitalists, that would provide funding as these companies mature, just like Scott had shown. So there's some critical milestones at which that capital becomes more relevant. Early on, you're trying to get, source money from, it's called the three F's, friends, families, and fools, and that's just to get out of the starting blocks. But then, when you, if, with the sort of guidance that we provide, we try to get them on that critical path of hitting the next, or the first key milestone, and that is the development of your product, your commercially-ready product. And then when you hit first commercial sale, then it just becomes a scaling issue of additional capital, and that's when it becomes more attractive to venture capitalists. So you can source friends and family, angel investors, you get to first commercial sale, and then you become more attractive to the venture capital community, because then it's providing capital to a, to an opportunity where the risk, the risk has been reduced, because it's already proven that you have a product. So we, in the last 13 years, just faculty startups, we celebrated our 100th startup two weeks ago. Those companies have raised in aggregate 630 million in investment capital. We've had nine exits, so seven acquisitions, two companies went public, and we have a number of them, another handful, that we think are going to also have very positive exits. And probably important for all of you, we can directly tie 500, more than 500 jobs to those companies. So again, as Scott was mentioning, this isn't form the company, hang your shingle, and all of a sudden you're hiring people. But if those companies can follow a very deliberate path and get to market and sell their first product, they then become ideal candidates for investment capital, and if that capital comes in and they've already established first sale here in Peoria, there's a much better chance that they're going to stay here. As opposed to, we have had this happen, where companies leave because they've got really promising technology, but the venture, the investor will say, well, we want you to relocate to Silicon Valley, we want you to relocate to Boston, or whatever. So the idea here is to get these companies planted and to first commercial sale in Peoria. That's then when they become candidates for capital and become job employers.
Well, I for one thoroughly appreciate the amount of experience that you bring to this. We have been committed to producing an innovation economy in the city of Peoria for quite some time. And again, I'm glad that you recognize what we've done so far and want to join in, because we're, we are still committed and will be committed until this ecosystem becomes a reality and these businesses are able to plant their seeds here and start doing business in Peoria. We have a very specific vision for the industry in our city, and it's not the kind that comes easily. But we have been willing to work hard and put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we stay on track with this, stay as focused as we can. So we welcome your input.
Well, thank you, yeah, and congratulations on everything you've achieved, because you really have, and you've established your own brand, because people are aware of what you've done here, and I think it's just an opportunity to kind of take it to the next level now.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all we have in study session, Mayor.
All right, then. We are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.